Commissioner Trusias.
Here.
Commissioner Schrusberry.
Here.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner McCutts.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Richards.
Here.
And the Chair, Commissioner Blumer is present. So we have a quorum. This meeting is in order. First, before we get started, we have some members of the public here. Is there anybody in the public grouping that would like to address the board on an open topic? We give you three minutes to make that presentation. No? All right, then we will move on to approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Sorry, before we approve the agenda, I don't have it pulled up yet, but I was wondering if we could, if I could make a recommendation for a friendly amendment to, where is it? Item six, communications, just nesting the bullet C, D, E, and F beneath item B, because all of those items were not separate communications. They came from community member Lynn Page.
That's fine with me.
Okay, that's a friendly amendment, not a problem. All right, so do we still have approval of the agenda? Oh, wait, we didn't get that far yet. Okay. Public remarks, the record should reflect that none of the members of the public wish to speak at this point. So now we move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda with the amendment suggested by Commissioner Snyder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute. Commissioner Scales?
Are we voting on the amendment first?
No.
It was a friendly amendment, it was approved.
What was it?
It was to nest items B, C, D, no, I'm sorry, C, D, E, and F under B and the communications, since they're all from the same person.
Okay.
On the same topic. On the same topic.
So all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any of that opposition? No. The agenda is approved. Now we are on to item number five, approval of the minutes from the last meeting, which was April 24 of 2023. Is there a motion?
I'm with approval.
Second. Any discussion of the previous minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Scales.
We had a discussion and then we had a straw poll on SUP.
Twenty-three oh one-one, I believe.
Yes, one-one. And the listing on the yays and nays is incorrect. You don't, you don't have a listing of Commissioner Schrusberry and you have Commissioner McCutts voting yes and also abstaining.
We did, yes, we did. Mr. McCutts was abstaining. That is a typo. Commissioner Schrusberry is under the yays.
That was probably me under the yays.
I'm sorry. You got McCutts voting yes.
Yep, we, that was probably a autocorrect that went McCutts.
Somebody's missing.
Yep, McConnell is missing under the ayes. We will address that.
That's right. We're used to the follow-up.
I, we had talked before, and it's reflected in the straw poll for the, straw poll for the earlier thing, but having the minutes, because it's not an official vote, it's just a, not listing names for that. Now, I can understand if it's unanimous, that makes good sense, and so they may have listed it out because of that, but I thought in general we were going to sort of the will of the board or like that be listed, not people's names, just so as not to confuse the record.
I would agree, and we are moving in that direction.
Okay, good. I like that direction.
Mr. Scales.
Coincide with that, we shouldn't be calling a roll call. We're doing a straw poll.
Yeah, I think we need to, now that we have a new minute drafter, Zach 3.0, we need to rework sort of how we do straw polls in the minutes.
That's not, that's not proper according to.
I would agree completely.
All right. Yes.
Sorry, also on page six, Commissioner Schrusberry, I don't, I don't know if maybe you'd like to jump in on this, but at the bottom, it's, I'm just going to read the whole thing. Commissioner Schrusberry noted that the ordinance already enforces the order requirement, and she raised concern that putting that level of detail on a legally permitted business would need a valid reason, and also make sure it was setting precedent for any future applicant. I believe she meant was not, but that was.
What I was saying was that whatever our policy is on this should be consistent. So any precedent we set should be, and not, what I was trying to say, whether or not I actually said it last month, was that this should be the case for any business applicant, not just for business applicants under this particular part of the ordinance. It should be enforcing everything that we require under.
I didn't want, I didn't want him to speak for you.
Yeah, and I hadn't read that.
It read funny to me, so I.
We can, we can fix that. I see where you're going.
Thank you. And I'm looking at page six of the minutes, not page six of the documents, of course.
Sorry.
So, I mean.
It's page four of the minutes.
Minutes before the vote. Yes.
As long as we're nitpicking, towards the bottom of page three, the fourth paragraph from the bottom, the second sentence reads, "He did make note that his client was not a leveraged cannabis organization." It was just awkward wording. He made note that his client was not a leveraged cannabis organization.
We can go back and take a look and see if there's a better way to reword that.
Thank you.
They probably can't hear you.
Did you hear me, Tom?
I did, but the people at home, so for what it's worth, the fourth paragraph from the bottom on page three of the minutes, staff is going to look at rewording at the request of Mr. McConnell, Commissioner McConnell.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposition? No, the minutes are approved. Now we are into communication. The communications should reflect the fact that there was a late letter submitted by Mr. Schmidt to the, that you submitted one today.
Yes, sir.
On the same topic.
We will, it's, we will include it in the next back end of communications, consistent how we've been handling these late emails.
All right. Okay, so we're now into item seven, public hearings. The first one is item seven A, which is the special use permit twenty-three oh one-three, Green Peak Innovations, also known as Skyment. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. So the request in front of you this evening is for this vacant piece of property right here on Northwind Drive, and I will zoom out in just a second here to give you a better sense of where we're at. This is Hobby Lobby. This is the site that, of the currently under construction Trader Joe's, Grand River Avenue, Dawn Avenue, right here. So we're talking about this site right here. This is, the location was selected during the Township's original lottery for medical marijuana facilities. Skyment, Green Peak Industries, doing businesses. Skyment went, won that lottery on this location, excuse me, went through the SUP process in 2019, 2020, and was approved in 2020. That's SUP nineteen dash one ninety-one. The request in front of you this evening is functionally identical to that request. As we have mentioned, all of the SUPs for the medical marijuana facilities expired during the COVID interregnum. There are some minor changes to the site plan, but staff will address those at that ti, at the time of site plan review. From a special use permit perspective, nothing has functionally changed from the original review, which did recommend approval. The site is within the medical marijuana overlay district. It was approved for a, preliminarily approved for a license. The proposed use conforms with the zoning and future land use on the site. The applicant has designated proper operations procedures, order protocols, and things of that nature as required under the licensing protocol. The site is served by water and sewer. So from a special use permit perspective, consistent with the approval in 2020, staff has raised no major concerns with respect to this application. I do want to point out one thing, though, and it was raised by two members of the public in their letters to us, and it goes to a related topic. And so there's, there's conversation as it relates to this applicant being in receivership. And so from a, from a special use permit perspective, there is nothing in the special use permit standards that would lead me to tell you that that should be taken into account from a special use permit perspective. However, I will be very clear. That is absolutely something that will be studied extensively prior to the issuance of any permit for a license, prior to any license for marijuana on this, on this site. So I don't want people to think that we're just blowing this off, because I would never ask you to discuss financial related things as it relates to an SUP for any applicant. But because there is a secondary process here, that absolutely will be part of the review, just not at this step. So I wanted to address that now. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has at this time. I know the applicant is here as well as speak.
Mr. Schmidt, I have a question. Which comes first, the licensing or the SUP approval?
So the township has adopted a lengthy process. We start with a pre-licensing, essentially. Then you go through the lottery, and then you're granted preliminary approval of your license. At that point, you have 60 days to apply for a special use permit. In this case, they did. Applied within the 60 days. The 60th day was a Sunday, but consistent with, consistent with the advice of our attorneys, accepting an application on a Monday when the deadline is a Sunday is absolutely perfectly legal. At that point, we review the SUP process, and the license is just kind of hanging out off to the side. Special use permit goes through its normal process. We review it, it's planning commission with a public hearing. Recommendation is made, it goes to the board, board makes a final decision. At that point, then, they obviously need to implement the plan, the special use permit. So in this case, construction would start. The license itself will not get issued until the end. There has to be a building with occupancy ready to go for us to go, yes, here is a license. The state, then, is sort of the last one in, because one of their last checks is, do you have local approval? And so, say it's May 17, 2024, and there's a grand opening here. On May 16, 2024, it's likely that we'll have issued final occupancy and our permit will have come, and then the state will have granted their final approval as well.
The reason I ask is because it looks like it puts an applicant behind the eight ball. They have to make the investment and start the construction, or finish the construction before they know for sure if they're going to be licensed.
Correct. That was the determination that was made when this ordinance was structured, is that there was an expectation that you were going to be, you know, in for the project if we were going to allow this in the township.
So, just so I can be clear, or in my understanding, you said a second ago, in terms of the financial situation, that comes later. At what step again does it come?
So, it's, it's an odd situation, because normally it would have already come. And it did. During the preliminary review of the license, there was a rudimentary review, and they obviously were, at the time, under normal operations. After we issued that preliminary approval, and now, between those two things, they've gone into receivership. And so now, prior to us issuing that final approval, there's going to be a much deeper discussion about the finances and the situation.
When did that preliminary approval take place? Was that?
January.
With this body?
January, February. No, that's an administrative function under the ordinance.
And so, so just so I can understand.
Yes.
So if they, so before you take that, that deep dive, they start, like, the whole building process, I-beams and all that, brick and mortar, and then this body can say, or?
This body will not, the actual issuance of the license is entirely up to the board. And at that point, the way the ordinance is set up, it's perfunctory. If you've met all the requirements, you're pre-qualified, it gets issued.
But what if there's a situation where, and I'm, and I'm trying to make sure I understand, if there's a concern with financial situation, okay, as, as to take a deeper dive, and then you say, and I don't know if it's, is it this board that would say, you know what, there's concerns, vote no, or whatever, but I-beams, brick and mortar is already up. Is that, is that a potential scenario?
So I think for any project, that's a potential scenario, that someone starts construction and then money dries up. I mean, I don't want to point to anything, but we've seen that happen throughout mid-Michigan.
Yeah.
What we're concerned with, I think, from a financial perspective, is because we are issuing a license that is special in this case, the, the medical marijuana license, we are going to do a more detailed analysis than we would do for Chick-fil-A, right? Throughout this process, the part of the process we're in now, we're agnostic to whether you can actually build the project, because we want to make sure that you meet our ordinance requirements. But because they have a special permit that's associated with it, before they get that special permit, we're going to do a deeper dive into the financial situation. So it's, it's two processes, unfortunately, and I know they blend together, but it's inevitable. I get that.
Right.
What we need to try and do, though, is, in this case, focus on the special use permit piece, and then, we're, and certainly, if the planning commission has that concern, I would encourage you to include it as a recommendation, so that the board doesn't miss it. I have no doubt they're not going to miss it, because we're on top of it as well, but this is a good time to express that concern, if there is one.
So, one last, one last question, then, then I'm done. But in terms of the deep dive financially and all of that, that, that decision, we, our commission will make a recommendation to the board if, if there's a concern, or do we not deal with that and only the, only the board would deal with that?
Technically, the planning commission has no role in the financial situation.
Got it, that's.
But if you have a concern, great time to raise it right now.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get.
Yes.
Clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I could be confused here, but so it's this building and it's the other special use permit that we're talking about this evening. Both of them were started and then they lapsed?
This one did not start.
Okay, so this is, this is completely.
This was completely lapsed, yes.
Oh, okay.
But approved.
But approved.
It was approved, but it completely expired.
So I'm just, my question is, is there some connection there, like, from a planning perspective, that we are?
We had a number of projects expire due to COVID.
Okay, all right.
It's, it wasn't just this industry. I mean, we had to do an extension on the American House project that's now under construction. The Village of Oakmist did an amendment.
Yeah.
Buddies was delayed. I mean, it happened to a lot of projects.
Okay, all right, that's what I was curious about.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, remind me again, I know you've told us this before, but a special use permit, if and when approved, does that carry with the property? Or in these instances, is that only with this particular applicant on that property, so that if, for some reason, they did not get the license, I know this is still in the district, but a new applicant who wanted to do something similar there would have to go through the process all over again, correct?
In, because of this use, yes. A new applicant would have to go through the process all over.
Okay, so if we trust the administrative process on the license share and want to put something in special, perhaps, on an approval of that, to assure that that process goes through properly, we wouldn't be giving someone else full permission to go do this without that same careful level of review?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Snyder, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I guess I was getting curious about that financial piece and what potential, what the planning commission can do with our concerns related to that. So I was looking at the ordinance, so eighty-six, one-twenty-seven, and the conditions that we can implement or requests be added to the special use permit. One of them being number five, a performance guarantee. I was wondering if you could talk to us a little bit about that? I don't know if I'm even on the right track here, but I, perhaps somebody up here on the board could fill me in.
That's an excellent question. So typically, a performance guarantee is used when there is a specific piece of a project that there is concern it won't be implemented, and to make sure that it gets implemented, the planning commission would recommend that a performance guarantee be installed. Great example, the Schultz Vet Clinic sidewalk, probably should have had a performance guarantee 10 years ago, since that's functionally where we got with them, is a performance guarantee. In terms of, though, a performance guarantee to ensure the entire site is built, I would need to do a little research on that. I'm not familiar with having done one of those before, but I'm happy to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Just one, maybe.
So you're saying that it's not that unusual during these last couple of years for projects to lap, so it's across industries. I'm curious, your experience as a planner with applicants who have the sorts of financial issues that we seem to be hearing about, is it very uncommon in your experience? Has it affected other applications in other industries? Has it ever happened in the township?
I can't say really it's ever happened in the township, but I can tell you, it's happened. I mean, we all remember the Great Recession. I mean, the number of home builders or home builders LLCs that all of a sudden were bankrupt on a specific project, and then someone else had to swoop in to try and pick that up, or it just happened to be another LLC if the home builder could buy it out of bankruptcy. I mean, it happens in the development industry that projects go sideways. This is just a unique use because of the nature of it, still being a federally controlled substance.
And would I be correct in characterizing our single biggest commercial property holder, CBL, as having recently gone through receivership?
Yes, I don't technically, I know they went through bankrupts. I think they technically went through chapter 11, but.
Okay, something that can.
This is where I'm not a legal, a financial legal expert. I'm a planner.
So I was just amplifying the point that companies going into receivership bankruptcy is, is a fairly common thing, and, and in the development business, it can't be rarer.
I would, I would, yeah, it happens.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Did we have an applicant here? Sir, normally we'd have you fill out a form. We don't have those forms. They got buried somewhere. Could you please tell us your name and your address before you begin your statement?
Absolutely. Chair Nathan Kark, Director of Government Affairs with Green Peak Industries, doing business at Skyment. My address is 11787 Caden Lane, Southeast of Lowell.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Well, hey, first of all, thanks for having us this evening. I can absolutely appreciate the questions. I thought staff did a great job presenting just kind of a general overview of our project, but happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
No, I, I think we're all set, because it doesn't appear that anybody's got any questions. Thank you.
Okay, all right. And I, I guess with that, then, I will just add that I noticed that there's a lot of interest in the receivership, so I will just say that this is ongoing for us currently. However, this is not something that's going to run in perpetuity, and the company anticipates coming out of this leaner, stronger, more financially organized, and ready to continue to be active. We're not anticipating any operational issues. We're just going forward, trying to use the tools that we have to emerge successfully. One thing, and I know chapter 11 got brought up, you have to realize that in the cannabis industry, that's not an option for us. You know, we are not a federally recognized business. So, back in 2020, when the governor said cannabis businesses can go through receivership, we consensually moved forward with the receivership, and we're looking forward to coming out the other side of this at some point in the future. So, you know, I understand the concerns, but just please understand, we're not going anywhere.
That's right. I forgot, you can't go to federal court.
Correct.
Any questions for the presentation? Thank you very much, sir.
All right, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. And do we have any members of the public who wish to address this issue? No, all right. Time for discussion. All right, is there any discussion of the issue presented in item seven A? Anyone?
I would start out by just saying that this has been approved before, and with that.
and without consideration of any financial issues, this is an appropriate site, it's zoned appropriately. The SUP complies with our requirements. Um, and they also, in this situation, the SUP, if we approve it, is only a recommendation, because this is one of the few areas where SUP has to go to the township board for panel approval. So, this is just a recommendation.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I know, um, and recall at our last meeting where we discussed this, that the whole question about our medical marijuana facility is going to morph into recreational, uh, marijuana facilities? And that, I understand, is, is in litigation at places. Do we have any update on that whole topic?
No, I can tell you the board is still considering how to address recreational marijuana. They have not made a final determination on that. I can tell you Traverse City did it the wrong way and is getting sued like no other. I can tell you that there are other communities that have done it differently and seem to be successful. So, what we are trying to do right now is, using the best information we have, chart a path forward for recreational that is separate from medical, because it needs to be. But that clearly there's some recognition of the existing, because the one thing I think everyone can agree on is we're not looking to double the number of facilities we have. It's still a hard cap that we're trying to get to of no more than five, which is what the planning commission recommended.
So, if you could elaborate a little bit on use of term successful and maybe not so successful? So, if you can, without, you know, taking up a lot of time, what's your definition of maybe a successful ordinance or a defendable ordinance versus one that isn't defendable?
It's really more defendable than not. I mean, the, the issue, so there's language in MRTMA that, the, the recreational act that, um, you know, some people read to believe that if you allow medical, you have to allow recreation. Other people read it, if you allow recreational, you have to allow medical. That's the crux of most of these arguments. And how you address that problem ultimately determines whether or not it's defendable and whether you're successful defending it. And that's what staff and the township attorneys are trying to make sure, that we have our arms around and are able to provide the best possible answer to the board as we move forward. I don't have the answer right now. If I, trust me, Commissioner Richards, if I had it, I'd tell you what it is. We're still trying to, to work it out.
And just as a, I should probably know this, but we have a medical marijuana ordinance on the books. Do we have a codified recreational marijuana ordinance on the books at this present time?
We do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Alright, uh, just so staff knows the direction to take item seven A, I'm going to call for a straw vote. All those in favor of approving SUP, or who favor SUP twenty-three-zero-one-three, say aye.
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 Is there any opposition to this? Mr. Schmidt, see the direction the board's going?
Can I, can I just, we had a lot of discussion about the financial situation. So, is this the time to say, you know, with the caveat that, uh, you know, financially, this is, we're not taking out a risk or an obligation? And I think, to me, just looking at, uh, the information that was sent, assuming it's accurate, uh, it's one thing to say there's a lot of, you know, that they have a lot of debt. And then there's another thing to say, not too many miles away, there's a considerable debt owed, you know, on a facility that's in our area, which gets a lot more closer to home, let's say, in a lot of different ways. So, anyway, but if we could put the caveat in that right up.
I agree, and I think staff is.
As long as that's clear, that's fine.
Well, well noted, we will, uh, work some language out.
Okay, thank you.
I just suggested does not necessarily have to be into a recommendation to the board. It could be in a separate letter from the commission to the board in connection with this, as opposed to putting it in the resolution, if that's.
I just assume they haven't in the resolution.
I'm okay with that, but it doesn't, I just don't. Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're going through a couple of options and see what works best.
Alright, very good, thank you. So now we're moving on to item eight A, MSU, uh, to Lake Lansing Pathway Phase Two.
The, the super controversial pathway connection. A public hearing was held by the planning commission on the twenty-fourth. We did hear from a resident with some concerns about some impacts to construction. Turns out our engineers were very well aware of that already and already had planned for, uh, extra measures to be taken around those three vernal pools. And they will be, there's no construction, I mean, there's construction near them in the sense that they're by the path. But there is no construction that should impact them, they will be protected, they are noted on the plans. And so, um, the water map amendment is still required, because technically this is in the floodplain, which is why it's in front of you this evening. But outside of that, staff would recommend approval of this, uh, subject to, um, the engineering department submitting that Loma to us, the letter of map amendment, and that the Department of Energy, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy approves the, uh, permit for construction as well.
I took this afternoon, before it started raining, to walk the path through there. And that's going to be a very pretty ride.
It's going to be awesome, actually.
It really is a nice area. I assume the, the path, for the most part, is going to follow what's through there with a jog near the end to get over to Oakhamus Road, if I'm reading the map correctly.
Yes, it goes off of the end of, um, Campsville. And, sort of meanders up, closish to the tracks. And then, did I turn at the right spot?
There are places.
I did not turn at the right spot, I apologize.
You're knee-deep.
Further out, yeah. A little wet in that spot. It's going to continue up along the tracks and, uh, pop out over this way.
There are places where it's quite distant from the path, or from the track itself.
Yeah, it meanders away from the tracks.
And, uh, at some point, it'll have to move over by the tracks, because where the road comes out or the path comes out now is across from the boardwalk over the floodplain. And so, there's no way to hook up. But it, it, it will be nice. I'm looking forward to it.
And you can look in all the vernal animals in there.
I did, scared at least one deer.
I won't have to run the hill anymore, so I'm happy about it.
I have a sort of trivial question. Has there been discussion of naming of segments of this pathway?
I am not aware of any naming discussion that's occurred.
Um, yes. I, I first walked that pathway as a potential connector here with Raysevery fourteen years ago. So, just bringing that up to, to note that these kinds of pathways, when you're trying to get them started, seem undoable. It just seems like a pipe dream. The inner urban took decades from inception to construction. This is just, yeah, super exciting.
Any further discussion? Alright, we have a resolution before us. Any discussion on the resolution before we call for a vote?
Motion.
Yeah, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve special use permit two-three-zero-one-zero, the MSU to Lake Lansing Connector Trail Phase Two.
I second that.
Any discussion of the language of the proposed resolution? Alright then, we'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner McCutts?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Shuesberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Trisise?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Then we are now on to item eight B, special use permit twenty-three-zero-one-one. Uh, the Hazlet Gallery, located at twenty-one nineteen A Hazlet Road.
And so this is a, this is a, um, follow-up on the public hearing that was held on the twenty-fourth. Uh, again, um, there was robust discussion, and the one thing I wanted to circle back to, in addition to the comments, um, that I made to Commissioner Richards previously about the, the medical and the record, there, there is no recreational yet, so I have no good answer of how they're going to mold together, if they even do. But, wanted to circle back to the odor question, because as you may recall, the applicant did state it was prepackaged, and there was some concern about making that a, uh, standard or that it would, uh, be inconsistent with other approvals. In staff's view, given that the applicant is actively offering it and stating this is how they're, uh, this is how they're working, that is very easily a condition the planning commission can impose and does not have any impact on any other business or any other requests that we see. Because this is something that they've offered and is specific to their application. Now, if they had come in and said, well, half of our stuff is prepackaged and half of it is loose, and then we made a condition that it all has to be prepackaged, we'd be having a different conversation right now. But because they have actively said, this is their model, this is how we function, with staff has no concern making that a condition of approval, and we have included it, uh, in the resolution, um, as condition twelve. The other eleven conditions are consistent with the previous approval for this site. Uh, and at this time, staff can recommend approval of the SUP at this time.
Discussion? Motion?
Is, is this going to be our standard operating procedure now? To include this? Requirement?
No. The only reason it's being included is because the applicant voluntarily stated, this is how we function, and this is how we are controlling odor, is by prepackaging. If another applicant doesn't do that, their application is looked at based on the standards and the ordinance. But it is not something that we're requiring of any applicant.
Can, can you briefly articulate what problem we're trying to solve with that?
So, from an industry perspective, it's the easiest way to solve an odor problem at a, at a sales location. Because there is no contact with the product to the air in the facility. It's done off-site. And so you avoid any potential odor complaint from a neighbor adjacent to a sales facility, because everything's already packaged. There is nothing to provide odor to.
So, these are packaged by what type of quantities?
I, I would have to defer to the applicant on that.
So, you know, they can be anywhere.
Sir, yeah, please.
Do you want, do you want me to give my name again?
Please, would you?
Benjamin Joe, I'm located at three-thirty-four East Washington in Ann Arbor, Michigan. Four-eight-one-oh-four is my office. My home is twenty-eight-fifty Stein Court, also Ann Arbor mailing address. Four-eight-one-oh-five, um, not in the city, sorry. Yeah, so really, they're packaged in the quantities that people buy in, um, you know, a gram, an eighth, uh, two eights. And a lot of times, what we'll do is, a lot of things are packaged in the eighth. So if someone buys more than that quantity, you know, cannabis has been sold before it was legal in these types of quantities, like an eighth of an ounce, a quarter of an ounce, things of that nature, and then multiples of those quantities. Usually, the biggest quantity that you see sold is really an ounce. And there are amounts that each buyer can have at one, um, at one time. They do have a quantity limit that they can have under medical marijuana. I mean, we can only sell a monthly allotment to them. So we don't really package that big of quantities. But I, I would say, since I, I do have the opportunity to speak to you right now, is, again, that's, that's our standard business operating procedure right now. We're, we're, we were more than willing to do such a things, if, if, if that's what needs to get the SUP across. But at the same time, we wouldn't want to be treated differently than any other SUP, just because that's the way that our standard operating procedure is now. And, and let me be clear and honest, there's, there's, there's no plan to change the operating procedure. But if, you know, industry trends, you know, take turns or anything, and, and, and my client finds that he's losing tons of sales because this is the way he's operating, he's going to want to have that opportunity to change. Now, obviously, over the past few years, he has yet to find that. But, but I would just say is that we would want everything applied consistently across, um, all of the people that are trying to get SUPs today, and not just have a one condition for our particular store, unless we do see, um, a difference in the site plans, and then obviously, we would be open to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do I still have the floor?
Yes, go ahead.
Based on the quantities that they're packaged at, the sizes that they sell at, I don't see a need for us to put this constraint on this one company.
Staff is perfectly okay with that. We merely provided the condition as an option for the planning commission to consider this evening.
I, I'd like to comment on that, because that's there, because I made the comment at the last minute. And then I spent the last two weeks thinking about it, and I thought, and odor, odor control is built into the ordinance.
I would agree.
So, we don't have to double up on that. It's up to the, it's up to the proprietor of the, of the establishment to make sure he doesn't violate the ordinance. We don't have to tell him how to do that, we just have to tell him when he's crossed the line. So, I personally am withdrawing my request, which I think is what set this in motion, that the prepackaging be a requirement of the approval.
And, and I would just say that from, for whoever may or may not make a motion on this, if you can just, uh, as party motion strike, condition twelve of the resolution. And we can eliminate that.
I have a question for, um, Dr. Schmidt.
Yes.
If you could just help me out here, correct me if I'm wrong, but this application for this special use permit, um, is basically the same as the one previously tonight. They're both essentially just giving permission to allow these provisioning centers to go ahead and either build or remodel an already existing building for the purpose of marijuana provisions. Am I correct?
Correct.
Right, and then the next step in the process is dealt with by the board, and that's handing over the official license.
Technically, the next step is to, the board approves the SUP. Yeah, but, and then they build, and then they get the license, yes, correct.
So, in, in the previous presentation tonight, you know, we, we had zero questions of the presenter, uh, with regard to odor, or anything of that nature. And our straw vote was a yes. So, I just, I think, from my own, um, understanding, I need that clarification, just to understand how this process works and to kind of understand how everyone else is understanding how the process works too. Because we had so much discussion about this, um, special use permit two weeks ago. And I was surprised not to hear any of those same concerns pop up earlier tonight with the previous permit for essentially the same, um, the same thing.
I'd like to move adoption of the resolution with the amended clause stricken.
Support number twelve.
Number twelve. And, um, just to speak to the motion, I, uh, struggled with the notion of, of, um, particularly trying to pay attention to odors in one industry versus another, and I, I can see differences, but, uh, they're not clear. Certainly, among applications, it seems really improper to impose a condition on one application versus another. And, since we already do have an ordinance that addresses the problem, if we wanted to do something more stringent than that for this industry, I think that would belong in the ordinance and not on a case-by-case application basis. Yeah? Commissioner Stan?
I, uh, astained, astained at the last meeting, because I wanted to read the material. And I thought reading the material would be important. I wasn't here on the commission when, uh, it was approved previously by this commission. Having read the information, I am now prepared to vote and support, uh, this, uh, SUP.
Any further discussion?
Two things, I think, one, the difference between this one and the previous one we just discussed is this is, one, part of the building is being.
is, this is one part of the building is being used for the intended use, where the other, if I understand it right, is a standalone building. So, again, it's not necessarily relevant, but that's the difference. I guess I have a question, and all the information we received the last time, there, and I read through most of it, there was a reference to litigation that was ongoing, and, and then there were some comments about this location may change between this location and in the, the building to a different location. That was part of the lease, if I understood, if I remember right, I don't have it right in front of me, but I guess I just interested in if the litigation that's pending, and talk about why, what the litigation really was, but is the litigation tied to this particular use?
So, staff, the township is not party to the litigation, I'm not aware of what the litigation is over. What I can tell you is that as part of the lottery process, this was the location that was selected. If this suite does not go forward, because of some outside litigation, there's going to be a problem with their original lottery selection.
Well, the, it didn't really say, I mean, it was interesting that if the other unit was Unit 2 versus Unit 4, but it said something like, "If that's available, then they're going to move between the two." And, I guess, I don't know, that just kind of struck me as a little bit odd, the way that whole thing was, but I guess, here's what it is. I'll just say this, that I, I will be voting no, and I may be the only person voting no, but I will vote no, because I just don't think this, again, is maybe a protest vote here in terms of the location, which is totally different than the one we previously talked about, so I will be voting no.
Any further discussion before we call for a vote? All right. The vote being called for is approval of the resolution as presented, with the exception of elimination of the last clause, which is number 12. All right? So, let's do it this way. Commissioner Snyder?
Um, yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
No.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner McCourtis?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Trisise?
Yes.
Commissioner Shrewsbury?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
So now we are on, is there other business?
Master plan.
Sir?
Oh, well, it says none, I just didn't know if anything got added.
No.
All right, so now we're on item 10, which is the master plan update.
So I just want to give you a brief update on this, because this is the, one of the last new things that staff is proposing to add. This is something that both Senior Planner Shorkey and I have done in previous master plans, we think it's a very useful exercise that'll help us going forward. What we've done is, we have taken all the vacant properties in the township, and we have filtered out those that are owned by other governmental agencies, or drains, or churches, all that is filtered out. And so what we have left is private property that is vacant. Within that, we then apply a factor to it for infrastructure size of parcel wetlands, et cetera, to sort of get us to a, a starting point of, here is theoretically the maximum buildout of residential homes, and this is almost all single-family residential homes remaining in the community. And so, we just want to put this out there to get you to start thinking as we move forward, because one of our goals, as part of the master plan, one of the action items that we're going to have, is to further refine this, so that I can tell you that, we can tell you that just looking at this number, it's high, because I know that some of these parcels that we've applied a 75% yield factor to are 95% wetland, and there's no way you're going to get four houses on there. I can tell you that some of these vacant properties are next to someone's house, and they bought it specifically to never develop it, and all that they would need to do to never develop it is to combine the parcels up. And so we're going to do a deeper dive into this as we go forward, to help us understand what the potential is for the, for this community, because under the state of Michigan's, you know, taxation structure, new construction is the lifeblood of most communities, and so knowing what that number is theoretically out there, and then being able to say, "Okay, we need to focus back in on our Picas, we need to focus on the Grand River Corridor, or the Saginaw Corridor." That's why we're doing this. So I just wanted to put it out there, I'm really not seeking any feedback, we're trying to figure out how best to present this in the plan, what does this look like? Because I don't want it to be a map, because people are immediately going to look for their favorite piece of vacant land, and they're going to find out, "We put 120 units on there," ah, they're going to be mad, and then we're going to have to explain to them why that is. And so, what we're trying to do is just get that conversation out there, so people understand, we are well past the time in Meridian Township where it was just growth, 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 growth. All of these properties, all 500 and some of them that are left are weird in some way. There's no easy ones left. Like, 70-ish of them are from existing subdivisions, and almost 90 of them are under 6,000 square feet. So like, at best, you get one house on that, if we figure out a way to allow that in the ordinance. So, it's just an interesting piece of nuance that we are adding to the plan, that I wanted to put in front of you, so you could think about and have in the back of your head as you're having, you know, cocktail conversations with people about the future of the township as we go forward. So, that's all I really have to say, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I will say that we are moving towards a draft, and we hope to get you guys a draft here in the very near future.
You probably answered a couple of questions I had, just as you were speaking, because I heard them, but I didn't, I didn't catch them. So, how, how many vacant properties in the township then?
Oh.
You said 500?
Hold on a sec, let's see if I, so, right now, this isn't vacant, because there's three sheets to the spreadsheet, and there's, so, there's about, there are about 375 residentially zone parcels that are currently vacant, that are of a reasonable size. There's another 87 that are tiny. So that, that population really represents your, your constructable parcels. There's 620 that are vacant slash have a church on them, because since churches are tax exempt, they show up as vacant in the database. There are 620 parcels that, unrealistic to ever expect development on, owned by a church, owned by the school district, owned by the drain commissioner, owned by MDOT, things like that. And so in total, right, those three numbers, 375, 87, and 620, plus you can throw in the 58 commercial parcels that are vacant, that's how much vacant land is left in the township. It's not a lot, to be honest.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Does that exclude our land preservation parcels?
Land preservation would be in the 620 parcels that are not developed.
Okay.
Yeah. That was when we realized we had a bit of an issue with our data, when we picked up on land pres parcels as having a couple hundred units on it. We started scrubbing our data then.
So if you don't envision this as a map, and I can understand the wisdom of not doing it that way, do you envision it as kind of a descriptor here, built out a little bit more in the master plan, or how do you see that actually?
Probably a chart, too.
Okay.
I, I envision a couple of charts, something along a pie chart to show this is total vacancy, this is what actually can be developed, and then probably size, a bar chart showing size of parcel, because I think people are going to be really surprised to realize the vast majority of these, the vast majority of vacant parcels are under an acre. Like, it's, it's that close.
One other sort of narrative piece of information that I think might be helpful is whether, I know you talked about size, but like, are these small parcels contiguous to one another, or are they like here, 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 spread out, and, you know, like, sort of where they fit with relation to one another would be a good piece of information to talk about.
That's a good point, absolutely.
And, also kind of building on that, my, I was curious about, you know, what percentage of them are inside of versus outside of the urban service boundary?
I have that.
Didn't appear in the memo.
So the issue is, the urban service boundary cut, jogs oddly, I think it's in Section 12, and I'm still trying to account for which side of the line, section, I think it's Section 12. But I'd largely have that, I guess. We'll have it, that'll be in the final version, but even those parcels, you have to assume at least one, because you still can build a house on a parcel that's zoned rural residential, still permitted. Yeah, it's, it's, it was an interesting exercise, and I think it's going to be beneficial to us in the long run.
This prompted so many questions from me, but I won't ask you all of them. First off, based on population trajectories for Meridian Township, do you think that this will impact our ability to house, continue to house that, those needs?
So I, you know, there's always, so, I think what we're, I think what we'll always see in Meridian Township is, there will always be a demand for more housing because of the quality of our schools.
Yep.
Oakville's schools are amazing, Hazlet's schools are right behind. And so until, unless, or until you see a fundamental collapse in either a school district, or the housing market just goes haywire, there's always going to be a demand. Now, what I think, one of the things that I think we're all going to talk about over the course of the next five years, during this master plan cycle, is how do we align that demand with what we need as a community? And that's the, the affordable housing, the missing metal, the, the other types of housing that, you know, for a long period of time, all we got was single-family detached 2,000 square foot houses on a 90-foot line, right? And so, what else is out there, what can we do to try and, you know, tweak that number up a little bit, inside the urban service boundary, in areas that are already developed, in areas that already have services? So I think that is a question going forward.
Great.
Okay. I'm abstaining.
I can't imagine the data scientist doesn't want to talk about data.
Well, once you mentioned data quality issues, I was like, oh man, I'm just going to be quiet.
It was fun.
Comment, really. Absolutely delighted to see that staff has gotten to this point, this is exactly the sort of information we should have, and I can imagine at some point, having a longer discussion about it, maybe a main agenda item, or maybe even some way of, of getting more public engagement on the, on the topic. With a map? I, I can't imagine that's going to happen. I mean, you can make your own map. Any other discussion of this issue? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on item number 11A, Township Board Update.
I'll be brief, for the first time in five years, I don't have to talk about signs for any extended period of time. Township Board did adopt the sign ordinance, they thank you all very much for your work on it. You are going to see the first application under it at your next meeting, because the Starbucks on Oakville Road, can't believe I blanked on that all of a sudden, is renovating their drive-through signage, and so under the terms of the new ordinance, that comes to the sport body for approval. So we will see the fruits of our labors right away. Cade Street rezoning will be, was adopted, was adopted as well, to allow the owner to add on to her house, rezone the property back to residential. We have actually had another owner now reach out to us. There appears to have been, when they drew that line along the south side of Hazlet, they grabbed a couple houses accidentally back 1940, whatever, I hadn't, the line's been like that for as long, far back as we can tell. So we may end up with a couple of these, now that word has gotten out, but we'll see how it goes. And the last thing I want to point out is, you are going to see a Section 61 application, and you may ask yourself, "What is a Section 61 application?" I had to ask myself that, because I have never actually had one in my career. This is a request when local unit of government is actually building something, so, fire station being the one that was most prominent in Meridian Township, but previously, we have also used this process for the land preservation acquisitions. And so Land Preservation Fund has recommended that we acquire a property on Cornell Road, and the Township Board has referred that to the planning commission. Staff is preparing that, we will bring it forward at a future meeting.
Commissioner Scott?
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, we stopped taking land preservation parcels, but this is an exception to that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not following the question.
It was my understanding that we're no longer accepting any more land preservation properties, but the board made an exception?
Well...
For this one property because of its special nature?
I believe that this is something that we're acquiring, not accepting as a donation.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, acquiring, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I don't think the board has specifically gotten away from acquisition, I think the Parks Department really has taken them, it's been a, they've had a much closer eye anytime the request comes up. There've been far fewer requests or options available to them, this is the first one I'm aware of in five years, I believe. So it's not that it can't happen, it just doesn't happen very often anymore.
Okay. I was under the understanding that the board had said they're not going to buy any more, but they made an exception this time. Can we get some clarification on that?
I'm happy to follow up on that.
I'd appreciate that.
Any other questions? Liaison reports? Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Schmidt.
Absolutely.
Liaison reports? Anybody attend any meetings? I, all right, I attended the, that's a big one. I attended the DDA meeting. There wasn't much happening, other than the fact that apparently they are now totally financially solvent, and they invited a local banker to come in to discuss the process that the bankers go through in improving new businesses in a development area. Aside from that, there's not much that I can report.
I attended the EDC meeting, and as I spoke before, there's, in June, there's going to be a Juneteenth festival for three days, that's going to be a little bit different than it was in the past. This year, it's going to include a blues and jazz event at Lake Lansing Park, and in August, we're going to have a Pride Festival also, that's being put on by the township that's partnering to put this on, and I would recommend everyone check the township website for more information about the two events, but they both sound like they're going to be very exciting, and the township will be very pleased with what I heard being planned. Matter of fact, Brian from your offices is spearheading the Pride event.
Is it going to be out here at the farmer's market, or all up at Lake Lansing? Where? Where, where's it going to be located? The festival? Where's the festival going to be located? I, you said part of it was Lake Lansing.
No, no, this is going to be right here in the township.
Okay, at the farmer's market facility?
Yes, yes.
Good, excellent. Any other committee reports? Almost. Tim's got a drink of water. Could you just mention for the folks at home, the meeting tomorrow evening in this room?
Yes. The, just as a reminder, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock is the meeting with the developers of the Village of Oakville's project, to get an update on the project. It will be televised, because the last I heard, it will be televised, so, if you can make it, great, if not, flip us on TV, and I'm happy to talk to you over the TV as well.
I think that came up right at number 12, project updates.
Yeah, so, you know, I would say the biggest update that I have to give you on projects, aside from what we have in the spreadsheet, is, got noticed this afternoon, actually, that the Hazlet Village Square project was approved by the State Tax Commission, so their entire capital stack... their entire capital stack appears to be in place now, and we are cautiously optimistic we will see that project under construction this year. Expecting site plans to be submitted at any time, so, good to have that one going.
I'd like to step back for a second to liaison reports, and something that I asked at the meeting, just for my own clarification, but it might, I don't know if it'll be helpful to the other board, I asked whether or not the DDA is actually a jurisdictional cutout from the Planning Commission, or whether we kind of oversee their activities. And to the best, the best answer I got was, yes, the Planning Commission is a superior authority over the DDA, and we have to approve whatever they come up with, it's not an automatic pass-through, so.
Correct. It actually, funny you should say that, it probably is a section 61 review, if they were doing infrastructure improvements.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we act in concert with them.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering whether they were virtually independent from our authority, and the answer I got was, no, they're not.
Nobody is independent of the Planning Commission's authority.
All right. Any other committee reports?
Very good. All right, so project, project updates, I think you finished that. So, public remarks, do we have anyone who wishes to address the board? Record should reflect no public remarks, so we are now at the adjournment stage. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we're all set.
Thank you all very much.